The United States of America and to the Republican Party stands one nation, under guard, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dinkert.
Steve.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
President.
Hagan.
President.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adoption of the agenda, and I think we're removing fourteen.
Removal of fourteen.
It'll be at the next council meeting, so with the removal of fourteen, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two is a motion for approval of the minutes from March 16, 2017. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, under awards and recognition, proclamation, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Kim, I should have you read this.
Good idea.
You want to read it?
I traditionally read them. I'll ask you for a comment afterwards. The proclamation, whereas the health of the people is tied to the health of their forests, and whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the air, reducing exposure to sun's UV rays, and decreasing temperatures during summertime, and whereas childhood asthma rates are lower in urban communities that have a higher density of trees, and whereas trees and forests improve our mental health by reducing stress and increasing concentration, and whereas one tree provides $62,000 worth of air pollution control over a period of 50 years, and whereas forests create high-quality drinking water by acting as a natural filter, and whereas getting a daily dose of trees is healthy for all Minnesotans, and whereas the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to all natural resources and dedicate themselves to the continued vitality of Minnesota forests. Now, therefore, I, the elected mayor of Austin, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28, 2017, as Arbor Day, and I do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Arbor Day month, Arbor Month in the city of Austin. Kim, I'm going to give this to you, and you have a few things. I know you were anxious to say a few things. We're planting some trees, right?
Yes, we are, Mayor.
And we've done it before, and it's something we do, right?
Yes, we do.
Talk about it.
We always try to plant a tree on Arbor Day, and it's different spots, you know, and depending on the weather. Some Arbor Days aren't as nice as others, but this year, we plan on spruce up, is going to plant a tree at the nature center in honor of the new building.
Ah-huh.
So that's going to be a great one on that Friday, and we're also working on a couple others, but we haven't received confirmation yet on those, so I can fill you in on that. But yes, we do have plans for planting.
Speaking of that, nature center, I drive by there all the time. It's looking great. When is that, when are we going to be cutting the ribbon on that?
On April 22, which is Earth Day.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you. I don't think there's nothing else on, under rewards and recommendations. Number four is a motion for the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, under public hearings. Number five is public hearing on street improvement assessment for Fourth Avenue Northwest, Fourth Street Northwest to 12th Street Northwest, Project 17101. The amount to be assessed is $147,970.49, at 4.5 percent interest for 15 years. Stephen.
For the next four items, they're all public hearings related to street reconstruction projects. Just to give council a little backup information, reminder that we had public informational meetings with any residents that chose to attend. The public informational meeting was held on February 15, and then we followed that up with our hearing, our initial project hearing at the council meeting on February 21. Residents were notified of both of those meetings. Anyone could attend on this project. There were 71 assessment letters that were sent out on this project, and at this point, we do not have any changes, major changes, from those presentations that were done at those times, so I do not have anything else for you at this time unless you have any questions.
Counsel. Do you have anything? Okay, this is a public hearing, so obviously, you know, the public is, you know, if you have a comment or something, is there anybody here that wishes to address the council on this project? Yes, ma'am. Why don't you step up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and your concerns?
My name is Carol Lanto. I have a rental property.
Now, are you concerned about this project here?
Yes.
Or is this a different project?
Isn't this the same one?
No, I believe, your item number seven, we're on number five right now, so it's just a couple more yet before yours.
Stephen, let us know, and we'll have you come up when you have appropriate one comes up.
That'll be good.
Okay, so, is there anybody that wishes, anybody else that wishes to address the council on this issue? If not...
Resolution declaring the cost.
We need a resolution declaring the cost. Wait a minute, what are we doing, go E?
He's already done that.
Oh. Okay, we're just down to the E then. We need a resolution declaring the cost. Counsel?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, E, we need a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for First Street Southwest, First Avenue to the dead end, Second Street Southwest, First Avenue to Fourth Avenue Southwest, Third Street Southwest, Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue Southwest, Fourth Avenue Southwest, Second Street to Fourth Street Southwest, and Fifth Avenue Southwest, Third Street to Fourth Street Southwest, Project 17102. The amount to be assessed is $222,548.76, at 4.5 percent interest for 15 years. Stephen?
Same with this project as well. It was presented at two different meetings. On this project, we had notified 77 parcel owners of this project.
Okay. And there were no written objections?
There were no written objections.
And there were no, okay. Counsel, do you have anything on this project?
Anybody from the audience? Anybody from the audience?
Yeah, I'm going to ask that. Is anybody here that wishes to address the council on this project? Okay, if not, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. We now need a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for Sixth Street Southeast, 12th Avenue to 16th Avenue Southeast, and 16th Avenue Southeast, Sixth Street to 8th Drive Southeast, Project 17103. The amount to be assessed is $150,784.75, at 4.5 for 15 years. Stephen?
Again, with this project, residents adjacent to the project were notified. We had 48 property owners that were adjacent to this project down by Woodson School, and presentations were conducted for those at previous meetings.
Okay, counsel? I know you're, is this...
No, one more, sorry.
One more, okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk to the council on this project? If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. And our final public hearing is a public hearing on street improvement assessments for Fifth Avenue Northwest, 8th Street to 11th Street Northwest, Sixth Avenue Northwest, 8th Street to 11th Street Northwest, and Seventh Avenue Northwest, 8th Street to 11th Street Northwest, Project 17104. Amount to be assessed is $149,104.66, at 4.5 for 15 years. Stephen?
On this project, we notified 84 parcel owners on this project, and again, completed both of the presentations at prior meetings. With this project, we have received one written objection, and I believe Mrs. Lanto is here to speak on that.
And she has a written objection?
Correct.
Okay, ma'am, you want to give us your name and your address and your objection?
Okay, my name is Carol Lanto. I have a property of 810 12th Avenue Southwest. I was out of town on the 15th, so I could not come to that meeting, and I don't remember getting a notice of the 21st meeting. Was that the 21st? I don't remember getting that notice. But anyway, I did get a letter saying that my property is being assessed $3,000 and $11 extra above the $3,000. That's a lot of money. I've owned property in Austin for probably 35 years. I've had two previous assessments. One was on a property in the southwest that was for $8,000. Another one was on a property in the northeast that was for $17,000.
Sounds like you're getting a deal this year.
I'm sorry, not 17,000, 1,700.
Okay, okay.
And the other one was 800. Okay, so, so I guess my point is, we're going up, 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 and this concerns me. I drove by the property, drove the streets in question here. The street that my property is on, Fifth Avenue, in my opinion, does not need to be resurfaced. There's maybe one pothole in three blocks which could easily be filled, and it seems to me, as I'm driving, it's reasonably smooth. I also drove Sixth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, which are in the notation here. Both of those, I can see where they probably should be resurfaced.
They should be?
Yep. And I drove Fourth Avenue, which is not mentioned, and it's busy, and it seemed to me that that was in as better shape as the other two that should be. But Fifth Avenue is the one, of course, in question that I have a real concern about. When you own rental property, you're always watching your expenses, and I'm wondering why we have city streets and city sidewalks, but all of a sudden, it's the owner's responsibility, if they don't own them, it's their responsibility to kick in all this money to repair them. We have, I've been paying taxes for a long time on these properties, and I don't see that the actual owner of the properties should be up for all this money when we need to do something. We've got tax money coming in all the time in Austin. I know it goes other places, but it seems to me it could be spread out more so that we're not faced with these, with, and certainly for somebody just owning a house. They're paying rent, not rent, if, my people are paying rent to me, but my rent doesn't go too far when we start coming up with bills like this. And for somebody who owns their own house and they're making mortgage payments, this would be a real kick in the gut for them, and I know there's a lot of those people out there right now who are looking at this. So when you had your meetings, did you actually have people attend?
Yeah, we had a handful of people at each meeting.
Okay.
Not a large majority, just a small few interested parties.
I think the problem is that people get intimidated by meetings, so there possibly could be a way to address this in a little more, less intimidating fashion. I don't know exactly what that would be, but maybe small group meetings or something. I know that there have got to be people out here who are as concerned about this type of things as I am, and the severity of damage on the roads in question, as I say, that Fifth Avenue is just not that bad, in my opinion. I'm wondering if, is there any money that's coming to the city from the windmills?
Well, first of all, ma'am, I'm going to have Stephen address some of your issues, you know, if we can, but I think you're just paying, you're being assessed actually a small portion of what's actually, the cost is going to be.
Yep.
So I mean, Stephen, would you, would you, would you?
Yeah, and counsel can choose to do this two ways. If you would like to move forward with the other assessments by removing the assessment for this parcel, I can meet with Ms. Lanto individually and explain, since she wasn't able to make it to those previous meetings, can explain kind of where we're coming at with these assessments. I think some of those, the previous ones that she mentioned, are very in line with our street assessment. What has increased some of her costs in this case is mainly the sidewalk portion of her assessment, and we can, I can go over that individually with her if counsel would like to make that decision, or I can try and answer some of those questions now if you would like.
Would that be okay with you, Ms. Lanto?
I just have one question I want to ask with counsel here.
Go ahead.
Did this project go out for bids?
Stephen?
It will. Yeah, we have set assessment rates, so we move forward the project ahead of the bidding process with our set assessment rates, but we will be advertising and taking public bids on this project, yes.
So you don't actually have a total amount? This is not an accurate total amount? Because you wouldn't know until after you took your bids?
This assessment is a final amount because we have set assessment rates that are determined based on previous year assessments, and we've been, we've been doing projects like this for 40, 50 years, so have a pretty good handle on the needs and the costs that are involved with them. So through that process, we have set assessment rates, and we have found that assessing property owners ahead of a project, it gives them much more certainty as to what those costs are going to be. Instead of bidding the project and assessing them costs in the fall leaves for a large majority of uncertainty for residents. We found this to be a better process for assessments. And again, I... Go ahead.
Stephen, maybe you could also explain that it's not just the resurfacing of the street, it's got other elements to what the project is, like sanitary sewer, starboard...
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, there's, we look at lots of different things that drive a reconstruction project. Some projects, it could be the surfacing, other projects like this one, we're replacing all the underground utilities like the sanitary sewer and water main as part of the project as well. And just to touch on one other thing, she mentioned Fourth Avenue Northwest. Yes, it's not on her list for replacement, but Fourth Avenue is one of the projects that we are replacing this year as well.
So, ma'am, would you want to come in and visit with Stephen, and he could go through this in detail with you, just what it is?
That'll be fine.
And then we can pull yours out of tonight, and it won't be, it won't be, you know, approved tonight. All of them, but your property will be approved tonight.
Ah-huh.
And then you can set something up with Stephen, and he can tell you just exactly... Trust me, I think everybody in this council understands, you know, why you're not, nobody's happy about getting these assessments, but...
Not when it's $3,000.
I understand, and it's always about 3,000. I mean, you know, they don't get much less cheaper than that, so I mean, that's about average, I would think, isn't it, Stephen? So, yeah.
Is that right?
I'd like to make a comment for the record because, obviously, you're not the only resident who's being assessed these assessments for street improvements, but this particular project that we're talking about, I live in that area as well. My name's on the list, a couple lines away from yours. The total that is being spent is $900,000. The portion that's assessed to individual taxpayers is $149,000. So we're getting a lot of value in improvements for what we're putting in as individual taxpayers. I agree that it's never fun to be the one getting the bill, but in my personal case, my annual property taxes, and I can't believe I'm going to actually share this, but my annual property taxes for the city are $150 a year.
Wow.
Your property taxes?
My personal property taxes on my property on Seventh Avenue Northwest, just the city portion, not the city, county, and school district, are $150 a year.
Do we look into that, Tom?
So... So, to me, the method that the city has chosen is to keep the annual property taxes lower, and then to have assessments come along every 20 years or so that are at a higher amount. And we could change the system, and we could pay more every year, and then you'd never get the big, the big bill. I have a feeling if we propose that, that would be a problem as well.
We did propose that several years ago, and it was not, it did not go over very well at all. Because if you get your project done this year, and you pay the $3,000, how would you like it if next year we passed a resolution where, from now on, that's not going to happen anymore? You wouldn't want that at all. You'd want it, you know, you'd want it to keep it the way it is, actually, until your assessment came up again, so...
Well, it just seemed logical to me that we could just assess properties and pay as we go instead of having surprises like these come up, so that everyone is kicking into the pot, because sooner or later, everyone would probably be affected in one way or another.
Well, why don't you come in and talk to Stephen, and I'm sure he'll be able to, you know, he can give you your options, and if he doesn't satisfy, you know, if you're not satisfied with his explanations, he can advise you just what, you know, the next steps are. Okay?
So I would also just like to add that you mentioned that this kind of format can be kind of intimidating to people.
Right.
And I appreciate you coming. Those individual neighborhood meetings for each project are more informal, you know, we're sitting at the tables and people are sitting down here. So I think, you know, you said you don't recall getting that letter, but that, there is an opportunity just, just to let you and others know that, that that's another way to get information and ask questions.
And it's so common. I mean, you get your mail every day, and there's 20 pieces of junk mail in there, so if it's not something you recognize, you just, I do, you toss it away, and you didn't realize it's a letter from the city telling you you're going to have to be assessed for $3,000, you know, about the meeting and stuff. But come on in and talk to Stephen, talk to him after the meeting, or you can talk to him now and set up a meeting, and I think he'll be able to explain it.
Stephen, I'm going to call you because I need to leave. Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for your input, ma'am.
Thank you.
Stephen, there was another resident on this list who had communicated and said they were, that they did not turn in a objection. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I see.
So, is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on this project? Okay, oh, yes, sir, why don't you come up and give us your name and address?
And I may not, I may be out of line here, but I live on 601 Ninth Street Northwest, corner of Fifth Avenue and Ninth Street Northwest. Two years ago, they did Ninth Street Northwest and removed the shade trees and all that good stuff, and now, you know, the cars go by 45 miles an hour, everybody looking straight ahead, there's all kinds of accidents and stuff. Is it possible?
What road?
Ninth Street, Ninth Street and Fifth Avenue Northwest.
And they go by on what street, Fifth Avenue?
Both, both. There's accidents on the corner, there's kids playing on the, you know, on boulevards and all that kind of stuff. It's dangerous. If we're going to have a new high-speed system put on Fifth, I would appreciate stop signs if there's, if I'm even addressing the right area, because it's frustrating, because I sit outside and sometimes mull, I'll either sit on the porch, and I think, you know, we live in a me society, and I'm coming down the road 50 miles an hour, everybody else can go to hell because here I come, you know, you know what I mean?
Normally, what I would...
Pay the best man win.
What I would suggest is, call the police department, and what'll happen is, they'll give you, they'll make sure for quite a while that there's extra police cars in that area, and when they see these cars, they'll probably stop them and give them a warning the first couple days, and then they'll start writing a few tickets, and usually within a week or so, they can get that pretty well under control.
Yeah, but that's not going to be a source. I mean, what's wrong with having a stop sign? I mean...
On where?
On this corner.
On that corner, for which way?
Either way, just some, so somebody gets to stop. I mean, otherwise, it's straight ahead, and it is. If somebody sat out there and watched it for a couple days, you'd know exactly what I mean, because nobody pays any attention, just here I come.
Stephen?
It's Russian roulette.
Yeah, like with any stop sign request, we will investigate it, we'll check on the accident history at that intersection, and we can report back to council on what we find on it, and then a decision can be made from there.
Can I do that?
I complained about it before several times, and they put out a, one of them speed things two blocks away, which didn't do any good because it slowed you down before you get there. But anyway, I just, one of my concerns, because I, you know, it's bad enough having to pay all this money, but I thought at least I'd like to get a stop sign.
Okay.
You know?
We'll look into it.
Because it's dangerous, so kids are playing out there, and something's going to happen.
We'll try and give a little extra patrol to that area, too. That can make a big difference.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is anybody else? Okay, counsel, you didn't have anything, so what we need is a resolution declaring the cost.
See.
With removal of the lady...
We need a separate motion to adjourn and continue the hearing on the specific property owned by Ms. Lanto.
But we're not going to continue that hearing, are we?
Yes, we are.
All right, so we need a motion to what?
To adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn with regard, the hearing with regard to that particular property and continue it.
Okay. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause, okay, now?
Yes, sir.
What do we do now? We table it?
Resolution declaring the cost.
Oh, we did.
We tabled hers, now we're going to go forward with the rest of those.
All right, all right. All right, then we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now need a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, nine is a resolution promoting the reserve pollinator decline and restoration of pollinator health in Minnesota. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members.[1583.83]
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, nine is a resolution promoting the reserve pollinator decline and restoration of pollinator health in Minnesota. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members. It's fitting that we approved the resolution earlier on Arbor Day. We have another opportunity to help pollinators in the community. They've been under attack with neonicoloids and fipronel chemicals known to be harmful for pollinators and verderets, birds and aquatic animals. This resolution essentially outlines procedures for the city to follow to install some best management practices to promote pollinators in the community. Pollinators are an important source for our food supply in the country and we'd ask council's consideration of the included resolution. This has been before the Parks and Recreation Board, Sustainability Task Force and Public Works Department all have no concerns with the resolution and we'd ask for your consideration.
Okay. Counsel? Do you have anything? If not, we need a resolution for nine.
So move the resolution?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. Now, 11 is a resolution granting a hard liquor on sale and Sunday on sale license to Hy-Vee Inc., DBA Hy-Vee Market Group. Ms. Castle?
Yes, mayor. The Hy-Vee new store is being built and will be open soon in May. On the consent agenda, we transferred their food and their cigarette licenses, but we need to have two resolutions here. One is for their new on sale for their Marketplace Grill, so we would ask that you approve that one. And then along with that, they are working on getting a catering license. This is an issue, they came to work session and spoke to us about a couple of years ago having the catering license in the city, so they've come forward with that now. And then we would also request that you approve the change of location for their off sale because their liquor store will also be moving into the new location.
Counsel, you got any questions on 11 or 12? If not, we need a resolution for 11.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
All right, resolution 12 is approving an off sale liquor licensed location for Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution approving final costs on the wastewater treatment plant domestic digester rehab project. Stephen?
Yes, this project council awarded to Wapishaw Construction back in March of 2014. The majority of the work was completed that same year and we've been waiting the, the last two years on punch list items and final paperwork documentation to be submitted by the contractor. The total bid price was $2,296,374.24. We actually had two change orders on the project that deducted costs, so the final contract construction amount was $2,210,1318. When you include the engineering fees with SEH and also removal of some contaminated soil, the total project cost comes to $2,930,746.75. And we had a project budget on this project for $3 million, so we came in just under the project budget. This is funded 100% through our domestic wastewater treatment plant funds. And I would recommend approving the final construction cost with Wapishaw Construction along with approving change orders one and two.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. Need a motion resolving the city, the city council into the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Number 15 is a motion reviewing an interim use permit requested by Nicola and Christoph Baumann. Holly?
Holly, I saw you somewhere. Yeah, I'm over here. I came back over here.
Okay.
I've got a lot of paperwork in front of me. During the March 14, 2017 meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a petition for a five-year interim use permit by Nikki and Christoph Baumann to keep horses on that property, which includes six parcels. The attached, there are factors attached for your consideration that the planning commission reviewed. The planning commission made a recommendation, five in favor and one against, to allow the interim use permit. The, prior to the meeting, it was actually scheduled for review in February, February 14th. At that time, two neighbors contacted the, some planning commission members and myself regarding their concerns about the horse pasture and also some drainage issues that were impacting their properties, also impacts the Baumann property. Because Mr. Lang had worked with the property owners, I, over the past several years regarding those drainage issues, he was also contacted. So Mr. Lang, myself, the property, the neighbors and the petitioner had a meeting together and this is detailed in a supplemental memo in your materials. At which time, the petitioner agreed to allow the city to do a project on her property, which would take up approximately one acre of her property with a retention pond that is expected to alleviate some of the issues the neighbors were concerned about. And at that time, they also agreed that the, they were willing to withdraw their objections to the horse pasture or the horses being housed on her property and give her the benefit of the doubt, I guess, with the conditions that are included in the interim use permit. The planning commission made the recommendation with the following conditions, that the horses be limited to four into an area consisting of approximately three acres of the property owned by the Baumanns. Additional horse-related structures would be limited to 160 by 80 or smaller exercise and storage building, 136 by 44 or smaller horse stall. And potentially two run-in shelters, which may or may not be necessary. Building permits and building co-compliance would be required and the petitioner attached some examples, which are included in your packet. That vegetative cover must be maintained in the pasture to prevent erosion and other water contamination. And that due to safety concerns and adjacent major roads, that fencing would be effectively installed to secure the horses and the petitioner's provided detail of a V mesh fence. The property and adjacent properties must consist of 10 acres or more to buffer the use from adjacent properties. The horses must have basic needs met, shelter, food, grooming, water and veterinary care. The buildings must be maintained and in good condition, including exterior finishes. Waste must be properly handled, required permits and licenses must be obtained and current. A water retention pond will be constructed by the city with cooperation of the petitioner to mitigate drainage issues in the area. And the permanent structures will conform with zoning requirements and variance may be required. Does the council have any questions at this point?
What was the planning commission vote on it?
Five in favor, one against. And there were six members present. The petitioner is here as well and she can provide some additional information if you have questions about details.
Counsel, you have any questions? Any questions of the petitioner? I'd ask you to get up and talk, but sometimes you're better off not talking. It seemed to be going pretty, pretty smoothly for you. Okay, so counsel, is there any questions? So Holly, are you done?
Yes, I can be done.
Okay, then we need a, or what number are we on?
I make the motion to approve the interim use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. That's all there is to it, thank you. I have a question now. This is a five-year permit, I should have asked this before, I guess. What are you going to do at the end of five years?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you come on up here? You've already got five years, so maybe I could wait on this, but I might not be around then.
Yeah, so, hi, I'm Nicola Baumann. So my understanding is that interim use permits are potentially renewable after five years. I know that they would be assessed again on their own merit. So in five years, my hope is that this will be such a beautiful addition to Austin that people will be happy to renew it.
And Holly, is that what we do? We keep renewing the conditional use permit or how do you make it permanent?
Um, in this instance, unless we pass an ordinance allowing horses in the city of Austin or some kind of hobby farm ordinance or something like that, she'd have to rezone her property to agricultural.
So it's easier just to do that every, every five years?
I think it is and then to, and then that gives us the option of including some conditions to mitigate any problems that might arise or that we might anticipate.
So in five years, if we wanted to do an ordinance, we'd know a lot more about what we're getting into after this.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
I just want to comment that I heard a little bit about the process for this project and I would compliment both Ms. Baumann and Ms. Wallace because I think the system worked just exactly the way it was supposed to. The property owner came forward and applied for the permit, the neighbors were notified, the neighbors read their mail, expressed some concerns, met with the city and the property owner, everybody talked it out, came together, win-win solution. So I think it was, kudos to all for the way that you handled it. I wish everything was so smooth for zoning.
I also appreciate the documentation that was attached. It was helpful.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Now, 16 is a motion reviewing a fence appeal submitted by Hormal Foods. Holly?
Again, during the March 14 meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a fence appeal submitted by Hormal Foods Corporation regarding their property known as the Annex at 1816 Ninth Street Northeast. They just went through a recent remodeling project. They included a seven-foot fence, which they intended to restrict access to the property and add security. The fence was installed with the belief that had been included with their original building permit, however, it became clear that it was not. And so then they came to us to, for the fence appeal process. However, they initially had barbed wire installed across the top as well, which was removed, that's not allowed in that area. And they, but they are still pretty much stuck with the seven foot, the extra foot that's not allowed without council approval. So they're asking, again, their concerns were that they don't have a guard shack there that they have at their other properties and they were interested in having a slightly higher fence for security purposes. The planning commission reviewed the request and their recommendation was six to zero in favor of allowing the seven-foot fence.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Counsel, questions? Comments? If there are none, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Thank you. We need a motion resolving the Board of Adjustment Appeals back into the city council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause, all right. 17 is a resolution accepting a Minnesota Board of Firefighters, Firefighters Training and Education grant. Chief?
Your honor and counsel, the Board of Firefighter Training and Education applies to the Department of Homeland Security for grant funding for hazardous materials. Then they send the information out and take requests from local fire departments. I applied for, or requested and received two grants, as outlined there. They're both 80% grants. The 20% will come from existing current budget money, so it's an 80-20 grant. I recommend accepting these grant monies.
Thank you. Counsel? Let's see where there'd be any question on this. We need a resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor.
Thank you. And for our final motion is a 18 granting a planning and zoning department to power the contracts for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at 503 13th Street Northwest, a ruble property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. All right, thank you. Are there any citizens now that want to address the council? Dan, come on up, tell us your name. We know it, but you're going to have to do it just for the record.
Hi, I'm Dan Kane. I live at the first house south of the Roosevelt Bridge.
Is that what, what's your address?
501 Southeast 7th Avenue. I've lived there since 1990.
Okay.
First, two quick comments. Terrific resolution on the Arbor Day and at the pollinators. Bravo. Seriously. Second, I want to offer some minority opinions relative to your Human Rights Commission. I've been going to these commission meetings for 16 or 17 years. And while they do some very, very good things, like tomorrow there's a meeting on gender equity issues, they do some things that are wildly inconsistent and, in my minority opinion, Human rights are near and dear to me. I've actually taught the subject. So, I want to comment that I think your commission has successfully converted themselves into an inclusive club. And what does every club need? Well, they need T-shirts.
T-shirts?
T-shirts.
T-shirts.
I object that in a community where 40% of the brown people and 40% of the black people live in poverty, that 136 taxpayer dollars were spent to buy the Human Rights Commission T-shirts. I'm sorry, I do not see the benefit. It's not inclusive, it's selective, among other things. I'm also concerned when a commissioner goes to a $500 conference. I'm old, I haven't really kept up with all the prices of things, but a $500 conference on poverty for one commissioner, I don't see the benefit. I'm sorry, I don't. And like I said, these are just minority opinions. Secondly, I would urge you to thoughtfully reconsider the annual allocation of $4,500. In 2013, that's applied by kind, thoughtful, fast, prompt, quick and efficient Mr. Dankert. In 2013, the allocation was $3,500, $1,781.84 or 50, almost 51% were returned unspent. In 2015, the allocation was $4,500, $782.64 or 17% was returned unspent. In 2016, last year, the allocation was $4,500, $973 or 21.6% was returned unspent. My belief is that there are serious, major, important human rights issues and to return allocated dollars is just really difficult for me. Thirdly, on a totally new topic.
How many topics do you have?
This is the last one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, am I taking too much time?
No, that's fine.
At the end of November, I had a heart surgery. And when I came home, the telephone switch box on the back corner of my 50 by 132-foot lot had been tagged by graffiti. I was going to say graffiti artist, it's not artistry. And that graffiti went over the top of the Vision 2020 peace sign and sunflower that was very carefully applied by a Vision 2020 artist. That triggered a lot of memories for me, rightly or wrongly. You've got to know that I'm a huge supporter of the Austin Police Department, but they can't be everywhere at all times. So some of these memories were being jumped by loose chihuahuas, not once, not twice, three times on my sidewalk, you know, on my lot. By a loose pit bull in my garage. By the shooting three times of a guy immediately north of the Roosevelt Bridge. By having on 16 separate occasions, stuff in my yard stolen. You know, nothing major, three bikes, lawn chairs, clothes off the clothesline. I'm, I'm the best dressed guy in Austin, you know. On four separate occasions, the special incident response team has been directly across the street and I've been actively involved in each of those. And they hauled out guns, drugs, once, five illegals living in the garage. During that one, I watched as 11 people from three houses down kicked the fence and screamed at the Austin Police Department for doing that. Two weeks ago today, at the house immediately north of me, the Austin Police Department took out a 16-year-old kid with $1,200 in cash, a pound of pot and a gun. I'm afraid. So I know that it's inappropriate, particularly here, to speak about negative things. But I, I no longer know what to do. So I ask for your help, whatever that might be. And finally, from the Department of Repetitive Redundancy, when I've been here before, that[1687.08]